Do we ever get the letter from the fourth ward or anything? What do I do? Did you get the letter from the fourth ward, is it? Okay. So are we still gonna leave that on the table then today, or what?
Yeah, I think we could just explain that we're not really pushing control, it's still city-owned park. Still city park, they just upgraded, we're not putting up any fences, so those are those two concerns.
Oh, there are big concerns with fences, okay, and turning control over to the private entity. That's been settled.
So I thought those guys were good with it?
I think we could just move on like it doesn't exist.
Is Harvey given in, all those guys?
Yeah. He's telling me they put clay in, I said they put topsoil in, they reseeded it. Well, you don't want clay, I said. I said, "We didn't pay for anything." I said, "These kids pay for all this." They gave us a thousand dollars. Let it go.
I didn't check the fourth one.
Okay, frozen, let it go. Oh my God, we're in the wrong business.
That AC is killing my hearing aid.
So fifty-eight, let it die? And then we'll just vote on the resolution like the new contract starts tomorrow. You got that, Edwin? Number fifty-eight, we're gonna let it die?
Okay.
You get that one? So we'll just say just let it die then, or just shove it table?
Yes, tomorrow.
Or do we gotta remove that?
I don't know what time.
We're pretty certain you should let it die.
You repeat this for a moment.
Yeah, you don't need to take it off the table.
For forty.
Leave it on the table, let it die, don't bring it up again.
That worked out, just like how these other things, I think.
So, yeah, and if you don't say anything, I think it comes back one more time and then you just let it. It'll die after that.
The second table, yes, it'll die. Can you take off the tables?
There isn't an existing fence.
You mean next to the wall?
Are we good to go? Or we don't have to wait for these days? Oh, we are? Okay. Guys outside? All right, I'd like to call the workshop order on September twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one at five oh five PM. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Bemano?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember A. Large Vandenover?
Here.
Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna be known tonight that Chief Edwards, for Chief Edwards is excused from our meeting tonight. That being said, we'll skip over to communications of the mayor, including this group messages.
Nothing.
Okay. Going to number six, communications of public and petitions.
Number one, a table communication from nine seven twenty-one, communication from Small Town Big Mines with a donation of a thousand dollars to cover the cost of clay mix for the kickball wiffle ball field project they are working on at the Fourth Ward Park.
Any discussion, council? I need a motion to take this off the table, a vote?
I will.
Me, Williams?
Second.
Stoyl?
Okay, number two, ratification of requests from the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision to set up an information table at the Dunkirk Pier on September sixteen nineteen twenty-nine, October second and fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to recruit for the upcoming exam.
Any discussion, council? I need a motion to refer this to the city clerk?
First.
And city attorney? And representing Jill tonight?
Yes.
Okay, are you good with that, for them setting up down the pier for those dates?
Yes.
All right, thanks, EJ. I'm sorry, I need a first, by Bemano?
Second.
By Stoyl?
Okay, number three, invitation from the Camp Rose Foundation to participate in its third annual Dr. John R. and Aluna Forbes Memorial Golf Tournament at the Casadega Country Club on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at ten AM, or to make a donation to its basket raffle.
Any discussion, council? Receive and file this? Number four?
Number four, notice of claim from Anthony J. Dulce of eleven-tenth place for damages to the sidewalk, four sidewalk tiles on the lot next to his house, ninth-tenth place, allegedly caused by a tree falling on them while being cut down by the city personnel on August fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion, council? Need a motion to refer this to the city attorney and Department of Public Works director?
So move.
By Williams?
Second.
By Nichols?
Number five, request from Small Town Big Mines to hold their second annual kickball tournament at the stadium on October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, from nine AM until the end of the evening at the stadium and school seven fields, requesting picnic tables, trash cans, and lights at the stadium once it gets dark outside.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, I need a motion to refer this to city attorney, city clerk, and Parks Department?
So move.
By Williams? By Bemano?
I'll be reaching out to them to let them know that the request for picnic tables, garbage cans, and all that are separate from the request for permission for the city.
Edwin, I dropped off a notice of claim in the office last Tuesday, same day I brought in a form to get tables and stuff for the Falcon Club. I got a copy of it, it's not in, it's not with me right now. But it was for John and Tammy Romanip, that should've been on today to go through for damages that they had for...
And who brought that in?
I brought it in for them.
That went to...
And I handed it to Ray. He timestamped it, gave me a copy, and it's not on here, I gave it to him.
Was it a request for permission from the council, or was it a request for picnic tables?
It was a notice of claim. I brought it in the same time I did a Falcon Club.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
It should be down there somewhere, because like I said, I brought it in last Tuesday, so it should've made the package.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
All right, moving on to reports staying committees, boards of commissions, Councilman Williams?
Uh, nothing for here.
Councilmember Bemano?
Randy, do you have a chance to go out and visit Skip by Lake Shore Drive either?
Yes, Andy and the doctor, whoever did that, they've got the map analyzed, nice and warm, they're gonna be able to work with it, and we believe we can give them some of that.
Great, thanks. Hey, Al, where you at?
Yeah.
Um, there's a residence on Lake Shore Drive North, I spoke at the last meeting, but Glenn was here. All kinds of shrubbery all over the house, it needs to be taken care of, and you know where that's is right now, it's right near Cedar Beach, you know where we're at with that?
Yeah, I'll check with Glenn and I'll show you.
Okay.
Tell us when you're down the address.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody here, I've heard rumors that the DHS football game for this Friday may be canceled. Has anybody heard anything else?
For what reason?
COVID.
COVID.
They've canceled three girls' soccer games this week already.
The chief and I were at the superintendent's office...
Foot club? No.
Yesterday.
Monday.
We were there yesterday, we asked specifically about COVID, and there was no mention of this bill.
Okay, there was something on, they put a little schedule, and they canceled three girls' games the rest of the week.
Is that come today?
I got it today.
Because yesterday, there was nothing I can say to us.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Councilman Bemano, Councilman Stoyl?
Nothing for here.
Councilman Williams? Okay. All right, moving on to unfinished business?
Number fifty-eight, resolution authorizing amendment to agreement for animal control services.
So Richard made the comment in the guidance tonight that's, well, I'm gonna ask to take off the table, a motion to take off the table, nobody will let it die, so we can continue on with the other resolution that we okayed, the new contract coming up for the ACL. Okay? So when I ask to take it off the table, it'll be, nobody say nothing, and then it dies. All right? Cool. Prefilled resolution?
Number sixty-three, resolution authorizing budget line modification for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion, council? Sixty-four?
Sixty-four, resolution authorizing renewal agreement with New York State Unified Court System for court security services.
Thanks. Any discussion? Sixty-five?
Resolution authorizing new agreement for animal control services.
So this is why we're not moving on fifty-eight, so we're all in agreement with this, right, guys? Everybody good? Mayor, you're good, Richard, everybody? All right. Sixty-six?
Resolution authorizing sale of Stagelsky Street Pump Station.
Richard, I just wanted, just if you can explain this, I'm just gonna ask you out there, but I just briefly in here, Randy, is this a good idea to sell this?
Absolutely, and the Chief Edward for Eric D. Free also, we've had discussions. Good now, we did our dogs or places in the city where the city provides a pump station for their fire protection.
Okay.
So having them do it themselves is gonna be much better, but here on, we've been working with them, and it's really, it's kind of an oddball that the city ever owned this thing, because it's really a town function. So the town has maintained it all this time, and that's when the fire was there, it was handled, the fire was handled by the town of Dunkirk, or Harvard, not the city of Dunkirk, so it's gonna clean up a lot of things, make it better for everybody.
Okay, I did speak to Rob Curry today too, and he did say pretty much the same thing, so he was in agreement. I just wanna make sure the mayor and Richard and the council is in agreement with this? All good? Okay, sounds good.
So basically, this washes our hands of it, right?
Sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven, resolution for finance committee authorization, equipment purchases, and LED change order.
Yeah, Richard, you wanna explain a little bit about this?
Yeah, this just, this came out of the last finance committee meeting, where there were some items that Public Works would like to purchase, that actually qualify under the guidelines for the new federal money stimulus money that came through, and that includes Packer, that was recently purchased, and some, I believe, six three-quarter ton pickup trucks that are on order through a pigback of the state contract, they haven't come through. The chip shortage is affecting everything, you know, coming out of the auto industry. So that's, that's that, and then for the LED, again, with the supply chain issues that we're having all across the board, some of the materials and equipment for that project came in a little more expensive.
Okay.
It's just a little rich, because it qualifies under, because of those reasons, it qualifies under the new stimulus money too, so we've been able to work with that.
Rich, didn't we okay the shuttle valves too?
Yeah, we're putting together a proposal for that, we wanna do, once we get the numbers firm enough for that, it'll be that as a resolution next week.
Okay.
So on the LED changes, is that for additional lighting that was not involved, like we know there were areas that were requesting more lights be put up?
That was part of it, there was also just the cost of materials, we're not marketing that after.
So they knew how much they were gonna make prior to, why didn't they overbuy when they bought originally? That's my...
Yeah, so this, so let me explain that, this, this resolution here is basically what the stimulus funds were provided to the city for. This project was put on hold, while it was put on hold, again, the bid was, this was bid out in two thousand seventeen, four years later, prices of everything has gone up, including labor and materials, but the total price of the project is over two million. This seems really reasonable, I've talked to Nikon attorneys as well as other mayors, and the recommendation was that we pay it using stimulus funds, that's exactly what these funds were provided to the city for.
You good, Nis?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving into new business, seeing none, I need a motion to go in executive session briefly before we go, before we adjourn?
So move.
By Williams? Second, by Bemano? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember A. Large Vandenover?
Aye, carry. Yeah, Marty, you wanna take a minute? Yeah. Yeah, we gotta, we pull the plug.
Are they?
Well, today.
Today in the best.
I was getting on the phone about yesterday. Several with the Norfolk and Western's bone. People had surgery.
People had surgery.
We did, I think. Yeah.
We did?
Yeah.
If you don't wish I told.
(laughing).
I can sell. Okay. That's done? All set? All right, like to call the order of the regular common council meeting is September 21st of 2021 at 5:41 PM. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Gomato.
Here.
Councilmember Stoya.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Here.
Councilmember at-large Vandebrouwer.
Here. Please stand for Judge Leal.
Judge Leal. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's already in this corner. Before we go into certification prior meetings, I just want to say that the council and the mayor, city attorney, and police chief went into executive session for public safety reasons. We did adjourn in our workshop before we started a regular meeting. So, moving on to certification prior meeting.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 pursuant to section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter. All items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect with the witness where I have here to set my hand in the seal of the city of Dunkirk this 21st day of September 2021.
Need a motion to spend some reading of minutes. So moved by Williams.
Second.
By Nichols. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Vandebrouwer.
Aye, Carrie.
Reading of the privilege of the four regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing a group shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman at large may determine in his discretion whether individual is speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman at-large Vandebrouwer shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made of bad taste, are slanderous, or not germane to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limit specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that the speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time had expired.
At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak? Please state your name and your address, please.
Gary Fredrickson, 750 Deer Street, Dunkirk. I had three issues that I was trying to find out about. I know the city signed a new agreement for paving. I'm trying to find out if Deer Street is on that list for the streets to be paved. From fourth up to the end of the 700 block, it's terrible. I ride my bike a lot through that area, bounce all over the place. The road really needs to be, if it's not on that list, maybe we could try to see about getting it put on that list. Second issue is, I'm wondering if it's, is there a city code for the distance between streetlights on the city streets? There's one area on our 700 block from 738 Deer, we go 13 houses down with those streetlights at night. It's pretty dark in that area. I'm wondering if maybe there's a way we could look at putting another streetlight in that area if there's not a city code that were guided by a net. My last one, I think goes to the chief, is the speed of vehicles on the 700 block of Deer really excessive. The past three or four weeks, I've noticed, just way out of hand, and there's a lot of kids on our block now that didn't used to be there. Somebody's going to get hit.
Any specific time of day, Gary?
Early part of the evening, six to seven type range, maybe, 7:30. Just seems like, they just seem to be really going faster than they need to go on a city street with a lot of young kids on the block now. Somebody's going to get hit.
Look at our afternoon shift, Dr. Wood, some radar reference to these two. I'll have night shift check that area to see if it's a real dark area and recommend if you need to put another light up. I don't think there's anything actually in the city code if someone else knows better correctly, but normally like every other hole or something like that, Mike, maybe you know.
Yeah, they were just thrown up at one time where they were convenient, what, you know, was, what worked out.
If there's an area that needs coverage, I'll have night shift look at it and then recommend back to me and then I will be able to.
Well, we go, we go like 13 houses where there's between streetlights.
I'll have night shift take a look at it and then get back to me.
Thank you. My only other issue is, and this is just, I know, again, the chief, you've dealt with this more times than anyone to deal with this. The house up there, 759 Deer, the drug house, I know, yeah, I think you guys were there last week, maybe for an OD call. There's a Spanish kid, long blond hair, rides a scooter, like a scooter slash mini bike thing, seems up and down the street. Again, afternoons, evenings, no regulations or nothing, just all over the place. They're running drugs out of the house though. I mean, you guys have been there a lot of times, but maybe we could try to step up watching it a little more again and see if something can be done with fixing that. Make sure, the rest of us take care of our houses. We're in early at night, we try to do the right things, and we got these people, now they're using bicycles to run out of there and scooters and whatever. It's to bring our whole neighborhood down. We're trying to keep it up and we got a house like that that we can't control.
And we'll see what I can do.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Randy, you have anything on the 700 block of getting paid? Is that on your list or with extra, with the extra chips money at the end? Maybe we could take a look at that?
Agreed. We, when we passed a resolution last week, or last two weeks ago, we made it an open-ended contract that we can add to.
Right.
So I'm glad Gary brought it to our attention, be glad to take a look at that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else wishing to speak? Portion of the opening of the floor is closed. Moving on to communications, mayor, disapproval message, mayor.
I just have one quick announcement. Basically, the Wright Park Inclusive Playground project is coming along really well. We're looking at total completion of the project. Estimated time of completion being one week from today.
All right, thank you, mayor.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Moving on to communications from public and petitions.
Number one, table communication from 9/7/2021. Communication from Small Town Big Minds with the donation of $1,000 to cover the cost of clay mix for the kickball, wiffle ball field project they are working on at 4th Street, our 4th Ward Park.
Need a motion to take off the table? So moved by Williams.
Second.
By Nichols. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Vandebrouwer.
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to receive and file. We'll just receive and file that, guys. All right? Thanks. Number two.
Number two, ratification of request from the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision to set up information table at the Dunkirk Pier on September 16, 18, 29, and October 2nd at 14, 2021 to recruit for the upcoming exam.
Need a motion, any discussion first of all on this? No? Need a motion to refer to city attorney, city clerk, and development department? By Gomato.
Stoya.
Second by Stoya.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Vandebrouwer.
Aye, Carrie.
Number three, invitation from the Camp Rose Foundation to participate in its third annual Dr. John R. and Alana Forbes Memorial Golf Tournament at the Casadega Country Club on September 25th, 2021, beginning at 10:00 AM, or to make a donation to the basket raffle.
Hey, discussion council. Receive and file. Number four.
Number four, notice of claim from Anthony J. Dolt of 11 Tab Place for damages to the sidewalk, Ford sidewalk tiles on the lot next to his house, 9 Tab Place, allegedly caused by a tree falling on them while being cut down by city personnel on August 5th, 2021.
Hey, discussion council. See and none need a motion to refer to city attorney and Department of Public Works Director.
So moved.
By Williams. Second by Nichols.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmembers Gomatos.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Vandebrouwer.
Aye, Carrie.
Number five, request from Small Town Big Minds to host their second annual kickball tournament at the stadium on October 30th, 2021, from 9:00 AM until the end of the evening at the stadium and School 7 Field. Requesting picnic tables, trash cans, and lights at the stadium once it gets dark outside.
Hey, discussion council. See and none need a motion to refer to Department of Public Works, Parks Department, City Attorney, and City Recreation Department.
So moved.
By Williams. Second by Gomato.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at-large Vandebrouwer.
Aye, Carrie.
Number seven, report to standing committees, boards, and commissions, Councilman Williams.
Thanks. Edwin, as we discussed in the workshop, I hand-delivered a notice of claim for John and Tammy Romanek of Middlesex. They are, even though they got a Fredonia address, they are city of Dunkirk. Just wondering, were you able to find it down there at all? Because I brought it in last Tuesday.
I was not, this is not ideal. When you came in, I know that you brought in three pieces of paper with you. The other two had to be processed through faxes, and this may have caused some confusion to my personnel.
Okay.
I was not able to get it. If it was timestamped, then when I am able to find it, it will go through as processed. It will not delay the process at all. This is not ideal, but it will not stop the process.
All right, thanks. I do have a copy of it still, so I'll, I'll get it to you. Alan, the, what, what's the rules for sheds in the city of Dunkirk?
The installation of a shed?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do issue permits for the installation of any structure. Typically, sheds, detached structures like that are five feet from the property line as far as placement, but that's, that's pretty much it.
I know a few years back, I knew some people that were putting up a shed, and they had talked to Glenn, and Glenn said that as long as it wasn't permanent and it was less than 14 by 14, that they didn't need to get a permit.
I will confer with Glenn on that. I just know from a zoning standpoint, we consistently issue permits for sheds, so.
Okay.
There is a provision in the building code that allows municipalities to exempt themselves from that requirement if they're under 144 square feet.
That's good.
But from the zoning perspective, we continue to issue permits for sheds, just to make sure they're not too close to the property line.
Okay, and what about if they're on skids?
Same thing, it's still considered a structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, if you could get back to me on that one, that'd be great.
Not a problem.
Randy, has Lake Shore started any paving yet? And if they have not, when do we expect them to start paving?
They recently signed the contract, the mayor executed it, we sent it to them. We're going to schedule a meeting with the mayor to do a pre-construction meeting and deputy provision and street division and engineer. So, the contract is ready. I talked with Lake Shore today, told them I want to expedite that meeting with the mayor and get those roads started. As Councilman Vandebrouwer pointed out, that the list is expandable, that we accidentally left a couple that were in the second ward off the list. Parts of 5th Street, especially that, that end to the west of Brigham is definitely on the list, and then with Mr. Fredrickson points out, I'll try to add that too, and whatever. We'll take a look at our money and availability. It's, it's a good price. We want to get started on this stuff right away. So, we're ready to go. We haven't had the, we haven't had the kickoff meeting yet.
All right, sounds good. Just, I know at the last meeting, when we were passing it, I know Councilwoman Nichols asked you how soon until they're going to get started, and I thought you had said then that possibly it could be as soon as the following Monday, but.
That was true, and it took a little time to get their signature back.
Okay. And lastly, mayor, have you attended any of the county executive and county leadership committee meetings? And if so, how many have you attended?
I've attended double figures, I don't know exactly the amount.
All right, thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Councilmember Gomato.
Randy, you got an update on that resident on Lake Shore Drive West?
Yes. The, Mr. Povilla and Mr. Bone met with the person yesterday while I was at a meeting with Lake Shore, I'm sorry, the Lake Area Management Commission. And that was a good meeting as well, but Mike and Andy had a good meeting with Skip, and they showed me all the pictures and things like that, they reviewed the maps. I had a discussion with Andy, I believe we can help the individual out and also will help the city out. So I'm glad that you brought it to our attention. I'm glad you brought it to my attention.
Thank you. Do you have an update on the Robin Street Tunnel with the cameras?
I don't, have you heard anything?
Well, Dan Manzella and I, I have a meeting with DFT on Thursday to wrap things up on that.
Okay.
So it should be starting anytime after that.
Thanks, Randy. Mike, welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I attended last Saturday, the 9/11 ceremony at headquarters for the fire department, and I'd like to thank Chief Edwards, Captain Cotta, Devin Friedas of local 616 of the fire department, they all got together, Chief Ordolona was there.
fire department. They all got together. Chief Orton was there. The mayor was there. Some other several police officers were there and some dignitaries. So thank you, guys. That was well organized and put together. Appreciate it. Appreciate the invite. Also, I got word during a workshop that Dunkirk football game this Friday is canceled, and they moved it to Tuesday, October 5th at 7:00 PM here in Dunkirk due to COVID reasons. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Gomato. Councilman Stoyl?
Yeah, the chief and I met with the superintendent of the school district yesterday, and to our pleasure and surprise, the principal over there at the middle school has jumped way ahead of us and had taken care of a lot of the problems, right, chief? It's, I mean, there's still some little niches that got to be straightened out, but for the most part, they were pretty impressed. I was pretty impressed with them anyway. And they're keeping an eye on this COVID thing.
With the plan we put together, J. J. Long, and what they're doing, it really has improved over there.
Yeah.
And it's a lot better situation.
Chief can verify it. The first three days there was well above a cluster, whatever they call it. And, but anyway, the school board is on it, and they asked the, the, the guy running the operation there, Tim Abbey, asked if we needed any help straightening out things here at the council. And I said, we'll take the principal. That's all. Because she seems to get things done. Randy, extra money on the streets. Take a look at the gentleman from Deer Street? I mean, if you got it.
Absolutely. Yep. And anything else you got? Baton Avenue wasn't mentioned on there, but it's definitely on the list as well.
Al, 7th and Main, they got the grass cut. Are those bushes included?
Yeah, we issued a notice for both, so. I did observe that, and there will be an appearance ticket issued.
Are we getting any close on the end of Columbus Avenue, tearing that house down or having a fire drill?
At this time, no. It's, it's definitely on the list of properties to deal with.
You would make people on Deer Street very happy.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's a tax sale issue, and because of the postponement of the county tax sale, that pushes back, you know, the land bank of acquiring that, so.
Okay, thank you.
We'll watch it.
Thank you, Councilman Stoyl. Councilwoman Nichols?
I have a few. Randy, we spoke yesterday about the train whistle. It is the Norfolk and Western that's blowing between 10 and 7 during the night. Have you had a chance to reach out to them?
I did. I had contact with the Federal Railroad Administration today, and we're going to make sure that they understand that that's still in effect.
An ozone.
Yeah.
Good. Mayor, I know with the stimulus money and everything, and a few weeks back at our meetings, we were given a packet by Chief Edwards on several needs that he has for the fire department. Can any of that money be directed to that area for, to help with issues that he has over there?
He gave me a copy of that, and I did look at it. We are going through the budget now, and these funds, I'll let our two fiscal people talk about that, but there was a plan that we had put in place to the council, and these items can be included. Some of them that can. Every department has submitted a list just like that. We call it a wish list. So the council would have to sit down so we could discuss it further. I believe there are some issues there that we probably could address with these funds. I know for certain that we can address all of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Randy, are we under any kind of an understanding or an agreement with Kravitz on tree cuttings within the city? What I'm trying to get at is, I know the city has only equipment to go up to 60 feet, and an outside agency would have to come in and do the 60 feet or above for cuttings. And if we are under the agreement with them or any kind of an agreement with them, or we can hire out to them, maybe they could do the 60 feet or taller trees and then have the shorter ones, our city crews doing that?
Yes, that process is, exactly is in process right now. The mayor has asked to expedite that, and Andy is the point person on that, and so we've been doing a master list. We'll get together with Mike Propilia, and we'll figure out what, what to do. We do have an agreement with Kravitz. I'd like to welcome him as a new business. We've been very happy with their work, and we're going to continue that relationship.
Great. And I said, the playground, we had a chance to go up there on Sunday. It's beautiful. It's a beautiful location. I'm so glad that it did, through all the endeavors, get moved to the correct, it's excellent to keep everything contained in that one area for the safety of the children. They don't have to cross the road or anything, and parents can keep an eye on them. I think that's it. No, there's one more thing. Miss, the gentleman that spoke about the lighting on Deer Street. I think we talked about it at one other meeting, that there was a request that additional lighting be added to Deer Street at one of our past meetings, not too long ago, on the LED lights. I think it was up toward maybe the 747. Does not anybody remember that? It was Deer Street because it was very dark at the end of the.
Yeah, we got a letter from Ray, and as the chief pointed out, the policy over time has worked well, is to coordinate with the police department, and so he's already initiated the, then the night patrol will take a look at that. Once he gives the word, we'll do the process to add another one. Deputy Director Provision is here tonight. I'd like to introduce him, and he will coordinate that LED, additional LED. Once the police say, yeah, we need that. Sometimes the police even say, we have too much light. So it's really their call for traffic control and for street lighting. We work well, very well together, and their expertise and them being out all night gives us a lot of good feedback for Mike and his team to work with to get the right LEDs up. Am I right, Mike?
That's correct.
Well, I think that's the same answer we got when the question was brought up before. I just didn't know if any of the procedures that needed to take place took place to define if they decided that the lighting was a necessity.
If they haven't, they will now.
Okay.
And, and we, we're still wrapping up the LED projects. We have plenty of time to make it right.
I believe we were waiting for the LED lights to go up so we could see what the new lighting was going to be before we decided on adding anything additional.
So is Deer Street, would you say Deer Street is completed with that, and the deer is completed with the lighting, with the LED lights?
Yes.
It is, Mike?
Yes.
We'll take a look at it now, when the lights are up and see what it looks like.
Yeah, at this point, we're trying to replace all the existing fixtures. After that, we're going to go, there's a few that poles have been knocked down and need to be put back up.
Right.
We're going to do everything that's in place at this point, and then we'll wrap up with the rest of the stuff. We have a punch list going of lights at plants and different buildings around town that we own that we want extra lighting at as well, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, no problem.
One question for Chief Orton is, are the guys instructed to tag any of the vehicles that are parking between the sidewalk and the street on the grass? There's more now than ever that in those stinking portable basketball hoops that are left on the street.
We can tag the ones between the sidewalk and the curb. We can't tag ones that pass the sidewalk onto the front line. That's golden zone.
But as it's getting darker earlier, and they're leaving those basketball contraptions on the street, and I'm down to contest, he's got several around him too, that they just leave them there with hunks of rock, concrete, brick, whatever they find to hold them there in place. Somebody's going to hit them.
I'll have our afternoon shift check on them. What we like, what we've done in the past is really try not to bother the kids. It gives them something good to do rather than being held raised in hell on the street. And it's nice to see the kids. I myself have stopped and played basketball with them a couple of times myself. But we try to remind them that when they're done at night, to take them down. If they don't, I'll have our afternoon shift visit with the parents and ask them to try and remove them from the street at night when they're done.
Thanks. And Randy, I know you said that Andy was going to tag the houses, that the streets were going to be done prior to them being paved. Could you also make sure that somebody does a news release on the radio? Because a lot of those people do listen to the radio, and they will know that there will be paving done?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Good idea.
Thank you. I'm done, Paul.
Okay, thank you. I did have some, had some things at, from last common council meeting that were addressed, and I called the department head's chief. Thank you. Richard, thank you. Mike, thanks. Randy, thank you very much. And Erica, good job. Thanks. I'm out. Thank you very much. And moving on, go to unfinished visits.
Number 58, resolution authorizing amendment to agreement for animal control services.
Motion to take off the table?
So moved.
Nichols?
J. and Nichols?
We're going to leave it.
No, we're going to leave it on the table.
I thought you said to take it. Guys, take notes? Motion to take off the table? See and none, court call the roll. Thank you. Prefiled resolution?
Number 63, resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year 2021.
Any discussion, council? Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandebouwer?
Aye, carry.
Number 64, resolution authorizing renewal agreement with New York State Unified Court System City Court Security Services.
Any discussion, council? See and none, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandebouwer?
Aye, carry.
Number 65, resolution authorizing new agreement for animal control services.
Any discussion, council? See and none, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandebouwer?
Aye, carry.
Number 66, resolution authorizing sale of Stagowski Street pump station.
Any discussion, council? See and none, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandebouwer?
Aye, carry.
Number 67, resolution for finance committee authorization, equipment purchases, and LED change orders.
Any discussion, council? See and none, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandebouwer?
Aye, carry. New business, see and none, motion moved.
So moved.
By Williams?
Second.
By Stoyl?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandebouwer?
Aye, carry.
Gotcha.
He needs adjourned, he's been nine hours away. Thank you.